All right, it's 9:00 AM. Call me over to do that report when we pray for meeting open. So welcome to the last city council meeting this year. Glad to see everybody here. This time, Councilmember Senator Melton should read the pledge of invitation.
Please join me.
The pledge is to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me. Lord, I just thank you so much for this time that we're here together, that we can come together for our citizens to make decisions for our wonderful city. Lord, I just ask you to give us the wisdom and the knowledge to do what you would have us to do in each one of these decisions. And Lord, I just ask you to watch over each one of our firefighters, emergency responders, please, and any of the employees that we have here in the city. And Lord, just guide and direct each and every decision that they make on their daily duties. Lord, I just ask all these things and do the same.
Thank you. All right, can I put down any review minutes? Councilman DC for second.
Move to approve the minutes of December the 2nd.
Second.
Question is second, all right, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, your citizen request, is there anyone here that wishes to address the council of the city? Well, we'll move on to public hearing. Open public hearing at this time. Will it be your reading ordinance, proposed ordinance sixty-two seventy-three, please?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, extending the corporate limits of said city to an acre ninety-five point two seventy-seven acre tract of land located south of US Highway eighty-two, west of State Highway two-eighty-nine, and east of Preston Club Drive, adjacent to the Sherman City limits and the City of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing for a municipal service plan, providing for separability, providing for repealer, finding the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, as others understand as open to the public as required by law.
Thank you. Question?
This is the final ordinance to annex ninety-five acres of land shown on the map. The annexation was requested by the current owners who are looking to develop the site. We've had two public hearings and nobody opposed this.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone here to address the council regarding the site of the city? Rob, will it be the C two, please?
Ordinance sixty-two seventy-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, accepting and approving the amended project plan and the finance plan for the Sherman Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Seven, providing for findings of fact, finding the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, as noted, as open to the public as required by law.
Thank you.
Yes, on November seventeenth, November eighteenth, the council approved enlarging tax increment reimbursement zone number seven, which is the zone that includes Wuthenville Grill. The Charge Number Seven Board met on December fifth. They have approved, they have approved this amendment to the project financing plans to include this additional acreage. The plan calls for initial public improvements of about five million dollars. It allows us to participate in other aspects of the development. The plan does not commit us to the projects. That commitment only occurs with development and those related agreements that come with development, all of which require council approval. This is just the first step of many getting to the point where we can bring those commitments to you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to, here to address the site of the city? Will it be the C three, please?
Ordinance sixty-two seventy-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, in section eight, sub-section five-eight, ordinance number twenty-two eighty, says to grant a specific use permit to allow automobile repair, paint, and body shop in a C-one retail business district, O-one, seventy-five, and eighty-two overlay district, at twenty-two hundred North US Highway seventy-five, in part of Lot One, Lot Two, Independence Square Edition, Section Three, containing three point two six zero acres, post-liquidated trust owners KMS Retail Investments LP developer, Luke Stengback, representative and underwood drafting and surveying surveyor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty on objects in two thousand dollars, finding the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, as noted, as open to the public as required by law.
Scott?
This specific use permits for an approximately seventeen thousand square foot auto repair facility on the west side of seventy-five, at the south of Hoyt. At the November meeting, P and Z recommended seven zero, which council approved this, subject to the staff review letter, and to limit the dismantled junk or inoperable vehicles or wrecked cars to the north side of the property behind a screen, so it's not visible from any adjacent property on the highway. Also, no priority part of that outside of the.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address the site of the city? Will it be the C four, please?
Ordinance sixty-two seventy-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, in Chapter Two, code ordinances, entitled Animal Control, at article two point zero one, entitled General Provisions, to provide for a new section two point zero one point zero two-two, to be entitled prohibiting the sale of animals in public places, providing for penalty, providing for inclusion in code ordinances, providing for separability, providing for repealer clause, finding the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, as noted, as open to the public as required by law.
Okay, thank you. Robbie?
Yes, this is an ordinance that we brought through discussions that we had with Council Member Melton. I'll let her speak to kind of, her heart for this, but what staff did from this standpoint is just look at what other cities typically do in this area, so we modeled our ordinances, or this ordinance after, kind of combining and taking the parts of the other ordinances that seem to be fit for Sherman. And so the desire there is that we support our activities of animal control shelters to increase the effectiveness of our adoption program. So that was kind of the genesis of, but I'll turn it over to Councilmember Melton to speak to.
Thank you. Through the years, I've seen different people setting up in town center and different areas within the city, and I just don't feel that it's appropriate to have people setting up just selling animals when we have so many animals at our own shelter who are not getting homes. And people that are breeding animals and selling animals just don't need to be sitting out there in the general area even near our trailer. I just don't feel it's right. It's not fair to the animals to be in a cage out there with the elements. I mean, our trailer has the air conditioning and water and things for our animals to have. And we should have people looking at those animals, not having people sitting there selling.
Mayor, let me also add, so while this ordinance is being brought tonight, really this is the first of a look that we're taking that Ty is looking at our animal control ordinances to see if there's any adjustments or modifications that are needed for those ordinances that exist in his area. He's looking at that more holistically, so we'd be bringing back any recommendations for any other changes to that, but we thought with the holiday season that it would be appropriate to get this ordinance put in place prior to that.
Is there anyone here to address the site of the city?
I'd like to say you were.
Can you come up and say your name, address for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Nicoletta Knox. Can I, you say that thing?
Yes, I have yours, please.
Oh, four, four, just moved here. Old Highway Six. Thank you so much. A little bit nervous, high standards, great to see you again, but I just want to say a few things about this and why I'm passionate about it. So we just moved here, I am a volunteer for the shelter, hello, hi. On top of that, I think it's important for you guys to know that I own two breeds that I bought purchased from a breeder, not from a shelter. So I know both worlds. I just want to say that it's really important to understand that this law won't look at responsible breeders. I did purchase dogs, and with my second dog, I think he a little bit more aware of what it means to breed dogs, the conditions that they live in, if they don't come from a good breeder. So new breed, good breeders will not care about this law at all. They ask for home visits, they want you to come and see those dogs that they're breeding, they want you to see the mom that they have as well as the parents. On top of this, they actually ask for them to come to your house to see what you are going to provide for that dog. And they also adopt at age of three at times. So dogs are, and cats, need to stay with their parents for at least eight weeks. A lot of them have now adopted ten to twelve weeks, which has proved really beneficial, not only for the dogs, but for the owners as well, in temperament. And then also, one of the things that I really like is that good, responsible breeders will accept your dog back. So two years after, three years after, a life change happens, something in your home just, you just can't provide that, the dog at home or the cat at home, that breeder will take it back. They will make sure that they find a responsible home for them as well. So I think this is really important, again, as Sandra was mentioning, this law will really help our shelter. I was out there Saturday, and we were trying to adopt our dogs, a gentleman came, was about to adopt one of our dogs, saw that there was puppies out there, and bought a puppy. So it's really, it's really disheartening for our team as well. And then the dogs, the dogs that are being sold out there, we don't know if they have any vet records, we don't know if they have any shots, they're just simply out there to make a little bit of money, and it really affects those dogs, they give them away from your homes, it's really important as well. Sorry, I haven't known, passionate about this. And then they also don't have any information about a doctor, outside of doctor's name, where are they taking this dog? All they just want is cash, there's nothing signed, you have no record of what happened to that dog, so that's really important. And at the end of the day, I know that the majority of people who do purchase dogs, including myself, I purchased two, we have good intentions, but it just happens that a lot of us just don't, are not that well informed. I've become obsessed with my Cavalier, King Charles Daniel, so I learn all of these, and that's why I've joined the team to help and volunteer for the Sherman Shelter. But the majority of people have good intentions, and if you're able to educate them and give them the opportunity and pass this law, it will really benefit the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Will it be the C five, please?
Ordinance sixty-two seventy-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman, creating an economic development subcommittee, providing for separability, providing for repealer, finding the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, as noted, as open to the public as required by law.
Yeah, so this is a proposed subcommittee of the City Council, which would include three council members, as well as the city manager that make up this committee. We felt that was important to, as we continue to grow, as we continue to have more complex dealings with developers, that we have maybe a vetting, another level of vetting before I even get to the entire council. So we've got Sherman Economic Development that itself is kind of a vetting mechanism for industrial economic development, but we don't have a similar program for other types of development that aren't industrial. So I thought it was a good idea for us to maybe establish this committee, so that we can have this committee look at things, ask the detailed questions, meet with developers, and have this vetting process in place before anything gets to the entire council. So there is a, there is a companion item to this, which would be the establishment of the members of the committee, and that is on D one, which would be after the adoption of these ordinance. This committee would be just kind of a standing committee that could be looked at annually. You know, we do boards and commissions reviews annually for County Board, Midland Board, all those different things, council subcommittees. So this would just simply be looked at annually in terms of its membership, at the same time we look at the other memberships of the council subcommittees. We would recommend adopting this as a good idea, I think, for the city going forward.
Is there anyone here to address the site of the city? We'll close public hearing and consider the adoption ordinance, council. Questions, discussions?
I have a few questions and some discussion on sixty-two seventy-five. I agree, thank you, glad for coming and talking to us. People who operate puppy mills, and they're all over the area, and I think some of those people are showing up here in Sherman to sell their puppies, and they're here every weekend, it seems, with a different batch of puppies, and puppy mills are bad, and I'm against it, and I don't think they should do that. But I want to ensure that the ordinance that we write also doesn't prohibit those with best intentions. Your dog has some puppies, and you want to give them away, and Sherman Town Center doesn't have a problem with you out there with the box, and you're trying to give away puppies, or, you know, say you want ten bucks because you think they might be something, and that's a one-off thing for you. I don't prohibit somebody from doing that, it's not illegal, it's not immoral, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just making sure that those people who are there every other weekend, or ten times a year, and they're selling puppies out of puppy mills to make their living, yeah, I want to prohibit that, but I just want to make sure that this ordinance will have some working in it, where someone with best intentions, who isn't necessarily doing anything wrong, won't be prohibited from, you know, liberty. I think, I think if you're, if, if a person on private property doesn't have a problem with you doing it once, and we don't want those animals dead in our animal shelter anyway, I guess.
I disagree with that, Josh, but there are the places that they can do it. I mean, we use Facebook for everything, social media for everything. If you want to find someone that wants a dog from you or an animal, then you can meet at a public place and do that, you don't have to sit up and put your animals in a cage and wait and sit there.
Right, but, but the way the ordinance is written, that doesn't, it's not necessarily clear that you couldn't meet in a public place, because it says public places in the ordinance, but not home.
There's some, there's some satisfinations in there that I think might even be looked at a little bit, there's some things about.
I, I agree with the, with the, with the intent of the ordinance, and I'm for it. I just want to clean up the language a little bit to make sure that we aren't unnecessarily prohibiting someone with good intentions who isn't taking advantage or running a puppy mill, just, just clean up the line a little, that's all.
So is there issue with the enforcement? Because how would you, if you're a man, if somebody with good intentions comes by for an animal, that would occur?
Well, I mean, we do it with garage sales and stuff like that, or actually keep it where they're not just running a resale shop out of their front yard and getting so many years.
Josh, let's hear what Ty has, because he goes with this every day.
Pull, pull, maybe pull, please, excuse me, I'm under the weather.
So I am fully in support of this ordinance. This doesn't say that people can't meet up in the ordinance, it's saying that people can set up and display puppies for sale. People, throughout time, we understand, and we do believe that they should be brought to the shelter instead, because being brought to the shelter, we're able to vaccinate those animals, and we're able to educate the possible new owners of the animals. So if somebody is needing to fund a new home for their puppy, we highly recommend bringing it to the shelter.
If they're not going to use a mechanism like social media or other, other things like that.
So let me ask this, if you've got a guy that doesn't get on social media, that wants to give his puppy away or sell his puppy, what means to leave him to do that? It seems to me that this says you can't give away, it actually says giveaway, you can't give away any animal basically anywhere. How, how would somebody go about, you know, getting their puppy to somebody else without coming to the center there?
Without some social media that you worry about.
There are enough people who use social media, goodness, if I want somebody to do something that I'm not familiar with, I can find somebody, mostly my grandkids.
I, I agree, but do we want to write ordinances that depend on social media to keep people inside the limits of the law?
I agree with the, I agree with the ideas of this ordinance, I just wonder, how do we maybe loosen it enough to give some people freedom to be able to, you know, if your kitten or your cat has a batch of kittens and you need to get them to a home, this, this ordinance prohibits you even giving them away to somebody in a public place.
Even going in front of your house and putting a sign that says, "Fruit kittens", you know, people on your neighborhood, you know, it would prevent you from doing that too, wouldn't it?
No, but this is, so this says roadside, public rideaway, which is basically roadside area as well, commercial parking lot, garage sale, that more speaks to the mechanism that you're using to actually get rid of these. Flea market, same thing, festival, whatever that would be, park, community center, or outdoor public place, so, to the general accessible by the public regardless of whether such access was authorized. But it doesn't say is homes, you know, own, you know, your own property, private property. So I think the intent here, as you guys have said, is we just don't want puppy mills out there, or kitten, kitten mills out there. It's not intended to prohibit people from freely, you know, finding good homes for these, in, in a private way, not in a public, well, yeah, I think was the intent here.
Yeah, and, and, and I know we all have that in here, but we want to always be here forever, and I don't want some little girl getting in trouble for trying to stuff kittens in her front yard ten years from now.
Yeah, she can do that, she can do that, that's not.
If she's, you know.
I don't know that this ordinance does allow that, honestly, I mean, we're way threatened currently, if it's roadside, you can't go aside.
It's, oh boy, nerve to cry, I think.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with the intent, I agree with that, I, I think that, I think the intent is perfect, I just don't know.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe you handle that in the, you know, the punishment phase, you know?
Well, here, here's what I'll say.
The enforcement phase.
Yeah, here's what I'll say from an enforcement standpoint, we had this discussion with our staff today as well, so this would be a joint enforcement effort between the police department and animal control. Much of the activity that we're really trying to target here happens on the weekends, right? At the same time, same place, that we're setting up our adoption trailer, things like that. We, I can assure you, we will not be driving around city streets looking for, from an enforcement standpoint, looking for, Bruce is laughing over there, looking for people, you know, little girls that are trying to get rid of their kittens and whatnot. So enforcement, to your point, enforcement, I think, is where we have the latitude to prohibit the puppy mills, you know, so to speak, and that would be the intent of this. This language, again, is intended to be public phase now. To the extent that someone's yard is next to a road and is that roadside, I mean, I guess that can be interpreted that way perhaps, our enforcement of that wouldn't be, would not be that, I guess is what I'm saying.
Our police officers and animal control officers make decisions every day for what's right and what's wrong, so I don't think that would be.
Would the public be able to exchange puppies within one of our safe drop zones? You know, I mean, it's like they do with the Facebook or Craigslist items, would that be something that this ordinance would allow for? Because I didn't, I mean, I was a little confused when I read it about that, just because of the, any public.
Well, I mean, look, people aren't running puppy mills to give away puppies, they're running puppy mills to sell puppies, you know? So selling an animal versus giving one or whatever for free seems like a pretty important distinction in my mind, in a way to sort of solve all the issues that we've been talking about. We just say you can't sell puppies, you can't sell animals in, in a public space or rideaway or everything, you know, I think you get rid of all those in one fell swoop, and the people who are left here trying to give away a kitten, okay, it should be legal to give something away, or at least try to.
That's what I was just going to say.
One point I would.
I shouldn't have changed it.
Yeah.
Look, we just take the word giveaway out of their phrase. I didn't know people rented or leased animals. I guess you're trying to cover all your bases, but I know they're very best, what are you holding me to?
Well, I mean, sometimes you want to take the puppy ride, and, you know, rent.
One point I'd like to make is, many cities require that anybody who finds a stray animal, they must report it to the city. These puppies or kittens that most likely people have found them. Another point we wanted to make was, this is going to help us maintain our animal population here within the City of Sherman. Currently, we have a very high intake for dogs and cats, and so when people are giving away free puppies and kittens, they're unvaccinated, they're not spayed or neutered.
How many, how many animal control shelters are operating in Grayson County, do you know?
There's only two.
Who are they?
Dennis and the Animal Welfare Group, and the City of Sherman.
So we're the only municipality in Grayson County that adds a shelter, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Do you know the municipalities in the county contract for bringing your animals up?
The only contract we have in place is with Grayson County Animal Control.
Well, I would, I would make a motion to approve of the addendum to remove the language about giving away breeding.
What does that do to enforcement, do you think, as far as animal control perspective?
I know it really won't affect us. It just, it just aids in, we still prefer that animal come to the shelter, so we can't spay neutered babies. We do not spay neutered all animals, but what you need.
And check them.
Yeah, and we do like to check them as well.
So Ty, just to be clear, you're, you're saying you would refer people who are otherwise going to give away animals to bring them to the shelter for adoption?
Yes, sir, down the road, that will help us maintain our nine percent liability, spreading by reducing the intake.
Okay, so to the extent, for instance, that we're out there in, in public, in a public place with our adoption trailer, and someone pulls up, you know, with a pickup bed full of puppies.
That they want to give away?
That they want to give away, we would say, hey, you're responsible, give them to us, so that we can adopt them out and make sure that they're vaccinated and treated and healthy before they're.
I don't, I don't know any, you know, any same person.
We would, and I encourage it all the time, anytime people have called us and said they found them, we intake them into our system, and then we foster the animals through them, and then they can adopt out those animals.
Yeah, I think it's great, and encourage everybody to do that.
So striking, so striking the language about giving away.
One cat can have only three litters a year, each litter can have at least six kittens.
Jesus, this is, no point.
So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all right. Aye, can I post? Motion. Pick up the other ordinances?
I'll make a motion to approve of ordinances sixty-two seventy-two, sixty-two seventy-three, sixty-two seventy-four, and sixty-two seventy-six.
I was going to try to pull sixty-two seventy-three.
Okay, that's fine.
Just for some questions.
All right. All right, then you want to go ahead and do sixty-two seventy-two, sixty-two seventy-four, and sixty-two seventy-six?
Second motion, second on moves.
Aye.
Can you post?
Sixty-two seventy-three. Um, this, the tax reimbursement zone number seven, which probably I ain't a favorite for, and so I appreciate the work that you guys did to get there. Question marks I had was, there was some detail, this is a plan that kind of dictates what we're going to do in that tax reimbursement zone, there were some detail, details about incentives and different things that we plan to do there, and how much we were going to contribute, and those numbers added up, you know, to be about seventeen million dollars, and then some extras with some other things, but I just want to get some clarification on that, as far as, you know, would that be intent of this? I know that it's a plan that we're putting out there saying this is what we're planning to do, but there were some things in there that we hadn't necessarily talked about as an entire council, so I just wanted to kind of get some clarification.
Yes, let me address that. So first of all, this is this, you know, we established the boundaries of the zone a couple meetings ago, enlarged it. So what this action does and doesn't do, number one, it is a plan of sorts, and it's even called that, right? It's a, it's a project and financing plan, so to that, to that extent, it is a plan of the city to move in the direction that are reflected in this plan, with things like infrastructure improvement, amenities, improvements, things like that. It also sets the parameters on how much the city plans to contribute towards it in terms of percentage of incremental tax revenue. So in this case, the city is pledging fifty percent of. So in this case, the city is pledging fifty percent of the middle rate to this project, or to this area, I guess I should say, which represents about a third of the tax revenue. So of our forty-nine percent tax, tax rate, this would be about a third of that. So to the extent that it's in the plan, it is a plan of sorts. What it is not is a commitment to build any roads today, or to build any amenities today, or to build any, you know, walking trails or, or any other public amenities. Those have to come through additional contracts, additional agreements with developers, et cetera. So there's no legal commitment, no legal contract at this point of the, of the game to build any of those things. Now, that is, that, I can see how that seems a little bit like a cart before the horse, but we don't know exactly what roads we're going to be building, and we don't know exactly, you know, what amenities are going to be there. There's also mention in there of a, of a conference center as part of a hotel. Well, we haven't really decided on that as a council, you guys haven't voted on any of that, other than just having some general discussions about it. We haven't, the council hasn't approved anything, so it, it, I can see how it does seem like, are we really committing to this or not? Is it a plan or isn't it? What are we committed to doing or not? Somebody, if, somebody picking up this agenda item and looking at the financing and project plan might conclude, oh, well, the city's on the hook for X, Y, Z, any of these things that we've talked about. But that would only come through additional agreements that are not yet in place. So I, I, I can, I see that there could be a little confusion or angst about it, and I do get that. I think the intention of this, and the requirements of the law to, if we are going to adopt a project and financing plan, that it have enough specificity, enough details, that somebody picking it up can tell, well, what is it that they're talking about? You know, what, what are the types of things that are being considered in this, in this project? So, so our, our plan is to bring back, commit, bring back contracts and developers. Actually, through, through this new economic development subcommittee, each of those types of projects would come back through that committee before they even hit the entire council. And so our feeling is, that's the protection from the council's standpoint about not agreeing, even though it's included in, in this plan as a plan, there would be nothing that is, that the city's obligated to, short of it coming through this committee and then ultimately being voted on and approved by the entire council.
I know we don't have any financial consideration here tonight, so I don't want to spend too much time on it, but, you know, I just know that this was a very specific, itemized list of things that would be completed in this plan.
Yeah.
And so, and it amounts up to a lot of money, and I do believe we're setting a benchmark right now on how we're going to treat these types of developments in the future, and things important for us to make sure that we're doing that in an efficient way, and that, you know, and these are things that the entire council hadn't discussed, and so I just wanted to make sure that I've got clarification on that, so, like I said, I appreciate you guys putting in the time and work on that, I just wanted to, you know, I guess, know more as far as why some of these items on there were, you know, ten million dollar commission centers that we hadn't really talked about yet. So that's kind of a, a blue sky, more of a blue sky item, I guess, but.
Yeah, yeah, looks like Michael's not here, I was going to.
Oh, yeah.
So what we're not committing to tonight is to building a conference center. I mean, that's in the, that's in the plan as a possibility, but the council.
Well, I think you've answered my question, so.
Okay.
So this is the first step.
Yeah, this is the first step of what will be many steps of, of the project. And those other steps will come through the subcommittee first and then through the entire council.
In, in looking at this, those of us who are on the number seven, tourist thing, we were looking at, these are the blue skies. If everything is perfect, what might happen in this area? Now, what would be our first priority? Do we have the money for that? You know, could we have the money? All right, you got that? How about what is our second priority? That, we were not looking at whether we were approving of these or not. These are just things that we're looking ahead, that are being considered for these areas, and we may scratch them all and decide to do none of them, you know, but we were just basically looking, those of us on this committee, you know, could we finance it if we needed to, and what would be involved in financing that?
Here's one other thing I'll say just generally, and it applies not, it applies to this agenda item, but more broadly as well. I'll be surprised if we don't come back to the council with a request to amend this plan at some point. Just like we've done with tourist number one, Sherman Town Center. We, for those that are very active reinvestment zones, we periodically look at those, and sometimes we change the scope of the projects, sometimes we change the terms. For instance, the terms of the original turd, uh, turd number one, Sherman Town Center, applied one hundred percent of the tax increment towards that infrastructure, one hundred percent. What was so successful and built out so quickly, we determined it didn't need a hundred percent. So we shaved, this was several years ago, we shaved that one hundred percent back down to like fifty percent or fifty-five percent. So we were able to take what we thought was going to take a hundred percent of the increment to do certain things, and we were able to shave that down and say, ah, we don't need a hundred percent, we just need half of that. So with a project of this magnitude, I would be surprised if we are not back asking for amendments to it when we have more clarity about, is there going to be a conference center? Is there going to be this other amenity or not? What roads are going to be there? How much are the roads going to cost? And so this is meant to be kind of a, maybe a stake in the ground, but maybe it's a stake in sand instead of in concrete. You know, it's meant to be unexpected on a project like this to be amended and revised as we get more clarity about what's going to happen.
It must be clarity through the subgroup, correct?
Clear, all, all of these projects will come through the subgroup, so the clarity will be literally through the council and the subcommittee.
So Robbie, tourist number seven originally was that.
Yeah.
At some point, we've added two hundred and seventy something acres.
Yeah, that's the.
I just want to make sure that we were.
Yeah, that's the amount of original.
The bell area right here, and I just wanted to make sure that, I'm assuming that's a little.
That is, that's, um, I don't know if we can have the ability to, that's, that's, that's the original one.
That's the twenty-two acre original.
Correct. The other one is on page eight.
It's a, it's a nine acre.
About two hundred, in total, this whole thing will be about two hundred and ninety acres.
Isn't the fact that we're having to increase the size of our turds, prove in itself that it's working?
No.
I move to approve sixty-two seventy, agree?
Second.
Motion second, Paul Verber.
Hi.
Can you oppose?
Thank you.
All right, this time, the parliament to consider a place for the work and mission of the Economic Development Subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that Councilman Steele and Councilman Eman, Eman be appointed there. Oh, and, and yourself, unfortunately.
Let me add, Mayor also.